Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who can rise, please rise. If you have an electronic device with you, if you'd go ahead and silence those as well. We're honored to have you here tonight for the board of commissioners meeting. It's the second meeting for the month of August. The year is fastly slipping away. We're honored tonight to have with us a military veteran, as we always have either a veteran or active military personnel to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and tell us a little bit about their career. And in just a few moments, I'm going to ask Major Dennis Joel Saint to come up. And I think I got pretty close on it, pretty close. But we're honored to have him here tonight. He's going to tell us a little bit about his career once he legions in the pledge of allegiance. Before doing that, though, if you don't mind, bear with me and let's go with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for many blessings. Thank you for this country, Father, the freedoms that we have, for the men and women that protect this front country each and every day, for the men and women that protect this county through the public service, through the sheriff's department, law enforcement, and the first responders, Father. Father, thank you for the employees in this county. Thank you for the county commissioners. Thank you for the citizens. Father, be with us in our deliberations tonight at this meeting. Keep us focused to do what is right, not only for the citizens of this county, but for you, Father. For these things, we pray, amen.
Hold up, Major. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Major, could you have the lead?
Thank you. My name is Dennis Joel Saint, Major Joel Saint. I'm the senior aerospace science instructor at Northside High School. I'm going in my sixth year there. I retired from Robbins Air Force Base back in ninety-four. It's strange to think about that I've been out longer than I was in. It seemed like such a huge part of my life and it was just really just kind of a blur now. It was just, it was there, but it was such a vital important part of my life, still wearing the uniform, still getting a chance to work with the kids at Northside. When I got asked to do this, I wasn't really kind of sure what to say, what to speak about. Got to think about what we're leading the pledge, and there's a story, it's a war story, it's mine, like most war stories, it's based on fact, and it may not be true, but I remember it well. It has to do with one of the aircraft that's out here at Robbins Air Force Base, in the back of the museum. And I grew up flying large airplanes, 135s. My primary airplane was a thing called an RC-135, which is the reconnaissance version of the tanker. That was my primary airplane. I flew RC-135, U's, B's, M's, W's, X, TC-135W, KC-135, A's, B's, and R models, EC-135, November's, and Yankies. And then I flew an EC-137 Delta for the 707, for the special operations commander. I flew that out of Robbins Air Force Base. So I've got a lot of time and a lot of different, I've got about 7,000 hours. When I got out of the Air Force, I flew for a couple of years for a company out of Atlas, out of New York called Atlas Air, flew 7.7 freighters, did that for a couple of years. And then got a job instructing with the J-Stars as a pilot instructor for the flight simulator program out there. And then got into junior ROTC. So I'm still not sure what I want to do when I grow up, but that's my kind of career in a nutshell. Got about 7,000 hours of flight time. Don't fly very often now, once or twice a year with, you know, somebody I'll tag along in an airplane or something. But there's an airplane out there, when we talk about the flag, junior ROTC is a, is a character-based program. The curriculum is character-based. We build citizens of character dedicated to serving the nation and their community. And we have a lot of, a lot of discussion about the flag. What are your, what do you do with the flag? What do you think of the flag? What are your, what are your, how do you deal with it? One of the biggest memories I have of our nation's flag, there's an airplane in the back of the museum back there, it's a big white EC-135 November, tail number 327. It was the airplane that Norman Schwarzkopf went back and forth in Desert Storm. Gets back there, fog apart. I've got a picture in my office of some Army troops getting on a C-5. And when I was moving, my first job in ROTC was down in Florida. I left at one of Robbins and went down there for a few years. And as I was packing, a photo fell out of the box. A friend of mine says, hey Dennis, when did you, when did you fly C-5s? I go, well, I've never flown a C-5, so we got pictures of C-5 here. And so I pulled it out in a little frame, looked on the back of it, and it says Mogadishu Going Home. And I barely remember what that, what that picture was. Some of you heard the story of Black Hawk Down, the raid in Somalia to catch a criminal named Eid. He called himself a general, but he was a terrorist, that's all he was. And the Delta Force guys that went in there to get it, well, a few weeks prior to the raid, in that airplane, I brought some of the commanders for the, for the raid. And we would drop them off in Mogadishu, and then we'd go over to Nairobi and keep the airplane over there so it wouldn't get shot to a hole sitting on the ground, and people just taking pot shots at it. So they did their raid, and as a matter of fact, when we brought them in there, it was kind of amusing. We had the Force of General Descent Commander onboard, and we showed up, there's no control tower, no, no control agencies, whatever. You just kind of check in on the frequency and it kind of said, okay, go ahead and land and talk to the other airplanes so you don't run into each other. And we're setting up to do our approach, and the guy, one of the Marines comes over and says, the field is compromised, you can't land now. And I, being Air Force, I go, okay, I'll bite. What does compromised mean? And he said, well, there's small arms fire on the field. I said, okay, we'll go hang out over the water for a while. So I turned out over the water, and just as I got headed out over the water, he says, okay, we need your party on the ground now. I said, well, are you still compromised? And he says, well, we're not right now, we got gunship up and we're doing okay. I said, all right. So we came in, we landed. Well, when we landed with the generals, normally what happens with the general is you, you taxi in at this fanfare and you blow up to a spot and everybody meets you, and that's how it goes. And there was nobody out on the ramp. And we come taxiing across here, and we were about the only airplane out there. And so we're rolling across, my co-pilot, I said, where are you going to park? Where are you going to park? Where are you going to park? And I said, I don't know where I'm going to park. And he said, where are you going to go? Where are you? I said, shut up, I don't know where I'm going to park. I explained to him as gently as I could that, you know, I'm not sure. And I looked across the ramp, and, and at the other side of, it must have been, you know, three, 400 yards across this thing, I saw a Quonson hut with a US flag and the flag of the Marine Corps on top of it. I said, that's where I'm going. And so I started across the ramp, and a Land Rover comes out. And I think the guy was Ethiopian troop. He steps out with his British made looking rifle, stops and jumps in front of me and says, stop. So I thought, okay, I'll stop. And about the time I looked up, and from this Quonson hut, a couple of Humvees were coming. And they drove up, young Marine gets out, talks to the Ethiopian guy, he gets in his Land Rover and goes. And that young Marine, he's, he's down at the edge of the airplane, down at the bottom, I'm looking down at him, and he gives me a salute and says, over there. And I could see that American flag, that US flag on his shoulder. And to see that flag on that young man's shoulder, and to see that flag across the ramp, I knew where I was going, I knew I was going to be okay. So I go over there and I dropped him, you know, we dropped the general off and we go over Nairobi. And a few weeks later, we went back with Ambassador Oakley, well, he was special envoy at that time, he had been ambassador, and he negotiated the release of the helicopter guy that was, that had been captured. And it was quite a memorable time. I have so many things, flying the RC, we got intercepted by Russian aircraft, by fighter aircraft all the time, that was just standard. You'd fly along the coast and they would come out. And there were a lot of times when our mission was nothing more than to carry the flag. We would fly on the backside of Russia, there's a big island on the north part of Russia called Novaya Zimla, big banana-shaped island. We'd go behind that thing in orbit for eight hours, show, carrying the flag, because that's international waters and this flag can go there. And so I stress that to my kids, what that flag means. Many of you have been overseas before, and I tell my kids, I said, when, when things are going bad, if you go somewhere overseas and things are not going good, you, you have the right to sit here in class and not stand when the pledge is done, but the Supreme Court has said you have that right. If you don't want to stand, you don't have to stand. Now, they do it in our program, you can, you can get out. But you have that right. You have the right to burn the flag if you feel like it, that is your right. But I can guarantee you, if you're in downtown Paris or downtown Brussels and things are going bad, and you see a building or a vehicle with that flag on it, you're going to run as hard as you can to that flag. It doesn't just stand for some kind of a political system or whatever. It's a living symbol of our nation. And I wish I could find that young Marine. When I looked down and saw that flag on his arm, I knew where I was going, I thought, that's okay, and he was going to take care of me. He didn't know me and I didn't know him, but I sure liked seeing that flag on his shoulder. And that's kind of, kind of me, that's where I stand. I did want to tell you about, those, some of you know about junior ROTC, we're a character-based program. And we're not recruiters. Like I said, our mission is to build citizens of character. And I try to stress to the kids, if you go into the service, yeah, there's some benefits. You can, you can enlist and you might be an E2 or an E3, depending on how much junior ROTC you have. There's some benefits, you get a little leg up getting scholarships, going into college for ROTC, and you can serve your country. I know how much fun I had in the military, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
It was more fun than you that can remember and I shouldn't talk about. But building a citizen of character, you can do nothing more than raise your family, pay your taxes, and vote. You are exactly what the country needs. Nothing more, nothing less. You are what we need. Just go to work in the morning, pay your taxes and vote, and take care of your own family. And that's what we stress to them. So I thank you so much. I hope that was good for you, sir.
Hold your position there, Mr. Chairman, Major. First of all, let me thank you on behalf of the commissioners and the citizens of this county for your service, particularly the wisdom that you shared with us. I think all of us feel the same way that you feel. The American flag brings an awful lot of pride, I know it does to me personally, and I believe it does to most Americans, because there's been a lot of sacrifices for that flag, that men and women have given their lives to defend that flag and defend this country and all. We also appreciate what you're doing in the school system. One question for you in regards to that, are you seeing the numbers flatlining, or are you seeing an increase in the number of students that want to go into ROTC, or is it declining, or what are you seeing?
Actually, it's slowly increasing. Why, I hate to say it, one Robbins high, I hate to say that, but, you know, that's a real...
We all appreciate you for that.
South Davis Drive High School, they, they're the largest in the county, they run about 250 cadets. Two years ago, we were right at 240, 250, but I had some that I didn't want, so I, I cut some. We're 200 now. The other programs in the county, all the schools in the county have junior ROTC. Veterans is seeing a good increase. As a matter of fact, they need a third instructor and they're negotiating with the, with the school board to how to, how to get that done. And both Perry and Houston County are both growing. The only reason our numbers are down is because I, I told last year and year before, I said, if you're not going to be part of the program, be right, you're not going to be in. So historically, before I got here, Northside ran about 180, 190. We went up, it's like I said, we went up every year until last year, until I said, no, you're not coming back, you don't need this, not for you. But we're on the way, we're growing back again. So, but our numbers are strong. For a program to be viable with the size of schools we have, you have to have 100 cadets, and all the schools are well excessive of that. So we're, we're strong.
That's good, it's a great program, and I know it benefits each and every one of the young men and women that's involved in that particular program as well, regardless of what school it's at, because it is probably a foundation being laid there for those young men and women, in all probability. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you for your service, sir. And I believe you got the 135's cup.
I did.
I can tell you, you don't give me a test, I don't think I can remember a third. Moving people and material around, that's a very important job, and I thank you for that, along with your service and your ROTC program, it's incredible. And the thing that I really took from your talk was, follow the flag. You can't go wrong. Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Commissioner McMichael. Thanks for your service, you do great, appreciate what you do for the young people over at Northside and all the kids that are in ROTC. You had an interesting conversation today with the AFL Association, they called me and talked about a few things on it, and one of the things they asked me, when you went on active duty, what did you find? And I said, I saw in my company, I saw a lot of young men grow up. And I think a lot of them growing up doing what you're doing today in ROTC, because they learn discipline, way and respect, and those two things go along with it. Well, then you find interesting, I spent two days on Schwarzkopf's plane, and the better part of it, and I, I sat down in his seat one time, and I picked up the red phone and nobody answered, so, that was a great time. Again, thank you a million times for what you do for the kids over at Northside.
Mr. Walker. Thanks, Chairman. Major, thank you for your service to our country, and thank you double for wanting to stay here and be part of ROTC program. It's a definite character builder. I'm a former educator and I know a little bit about ROTC, and Pat and I have started that program over at Northside, and you carried on that great tradition that Pat set. But I can't, I think we need ROTC, a program like that in every school in Georgia, and we need people like you in every school in Georgia. And I thank you for that commitment. And, but I had an opportunity like Tom to serve in the military. I spent two years in Germany, worked 22 months in Germany, and I had a sense, there was a lot of flying mainly on helicopters, but, so it's, I, but thank you for your service and what you do, and thank you for the remain here in Houston County. And I think you spoke to the Octopus Club one time when I was there.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, and I appreciate that presentation, it was very enlightening.
Ms. Ross. I think I can just sum it up with thank you for everything you're doing, for your service to the country, for your decision to teach the kids to be part of the junior ROTC program, and to continue to enrich their lives and make a difference in the young people. So we appreciate your service, both to the country and the community, and thank you for being here.
Major, meet us right up front if you don't mind, right here in front. Just get a few breaths, I don't want to say a word or two, three just left.
Major, bear with me, your knee doesn't work quickly sometimes. All right, now's mine. Okay, thank you.
All right. On behalf of the people of Houston County, we'd like to give you a few small tokens of my appreciation. First of all, you can see the American flag, olive flag. Thank you for your service to our country. On the other side, you have the county seal.
Thank you.
We also have a pale pin, American flag.
Yep.
And also a pale pin, the county seal, we'd like to provide to you as well.
Thank you, sir.
They're small gifts, but it's something that, when you look back, you can say, well, the people in this county do try to acknowledge the military people. That's what we want to be known as. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next order of business will be the approval of the minutes for August the second and August the third meeting. Need a motion, I think you've had an opportunity to review the minutes, and if there's no corrections or additions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I've also reviewed them and I find it in order, and can we do both of them at the same time with one motion?
Yes, sir, that would be fine.
I make a motion, we approve both, both sets of amendments at one time.
We got a motion by Commissioner McMichael, need a second to the motion for approval of the minute.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
A second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion raise your right hand, motion carries. Next item of business, before we move into new business, we need to add two items to the agenda tonight. Item number 12 will be a budget adjustment, a final budget adjustment for FY16 that we need to add so we can make some final adjustments and be prepared for the auditors when they come in next week or so. Also, item number 13 is a resolution for credit card replacements. There's a few employees in the county that has credit cards, and we're changing the credit card, and we've got to fill out a different application to change this credit card, so I need authorization to sign the resolution, so we need to do that as item number 13. If I can get a motion to add item 12 and 13 to the agenda.
I'll make a motion if we add those items.
Got a motion by Commissioner Robinson to add both item 12 and 13 to the agenda, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion raise your right hand, motion carries. So the agenda will go through item number 13 now. On the new business, item number one on the agenda tonight is personnel request on the elections. Commissioner Walker, could you present that one?
Thanks, Chairman. Election superintendent Beverly Nabel has requested to hire a new employee for a bachelor position. I would move to hire Lieutenant McCarthy as registration slash election technician in the Elections Department, the grade 10B. If approved by the commission, that would be effective August 17, 2016.
A motion for approval by Commissioner Walker to hire a part-time employee for board of elections, need a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Ross. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor raise your right hand, motion carries. Commissioner Walker, you almost messed up and called it former superintendent of board of elections, and that's hard to do, since she was there for so long, and we've got a new superintendent now.
Yeah, yeah, it did. Yes, sir.
Item number two on the agenda will be a lighting proposal on the State Route 96 Water Tank. Commissioner Walker, get it sent out.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to, if we have a lighting proposal for a complete installation of lights to eliminate the Highway 96 Water Tank, as well as to upgrade the existing navigation lights, therefore I would move to allow the chairman to sign the lighting equipment installation agreement with Utility Service Company Incorporated that'll land in an amount of $27,829 for the Highway 96 Water Tank.
A motion for approval to approve this lighting equipment on the new tank scheme of Water Tank, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it then, Mr. Chairman.
A second by Commissioner McMichael. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion raise your right hand, motion carries for the audience and the media. The tank will have LED lights at the base of the tank to light the stem and the bottom of the bowl, and on the top of it, there'll be a ring of LED lights on the very top of the tank now that will illuminate the top of the tank as well at night. Should be, not only for the aircraft that's flying over, but you're going to be able to see it from a larger, I mean, a much further distance at night than you can currently, because now there's no lights on it, with the exception of the aviation light on top of it currently. Probably a spectacular sight, see. And the lights going to the LED lighting will be much better than what it has been. It'll be nice, so. Item number three is a right-of-way easement. Commissioner Thompson, if you would present that one.
Well, overhead and underground right-of-way easement for Flynn Electric at the site of the county's new Purdue Fire Station, number 247 Spur. On page four, next to the last page, it shows you a diagram of that, if you want to take a peek at that. My motion is to approve Chairman Stone to sign the overhead and underground right-of-way easement agreement with Flynn Energy for Houston County's Purdue Fire Station number six, more commonly known as Georgia 247 Spur. Here in Georgia, I'll make the, the description as part of the motion, please, there, if you would, I won't read it.
Okay, so you want the description included in the motion, but you're just not going to read it?
Yes, not going to read it, yes.
Okay. All right, got a motion for approval for the right-of-way easement with ten energies by Commissioner Thompson, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor raise your right hand, motion carries. Mr. Altrich, we can get electricity to the fire station now, right?
Yes, sir.
Item number four on the agenda, school zone designation removal, Commissioner Thompson, if you'd present that one.
School zone located on Simmons Road and Dunbar Road at West Side Baptist Church is no longer necessary because the church is closed, the West Side Academy School, the church is requesting the sign be removed, and the sheriff has agreed that the signs are no longer needed. My motion is to approve the removal of the designated school zone on Dunbar Road and Simmons Road at West Side Baptist Church due to the closing of the West Side Academy and authorized public works to remove the signs.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Thompson, need a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Robinson. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Dunbar, one of the media personnel asked me when the school closed, would you like to state that for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my understanding that they, when they completed last school year, concession of the school year, when it, I guess in May, that was their final year, so they contacted us, asking us to remove the school zones because it's no longer needed because the school was closed.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor raise your right hand, motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is L-MIG 2016. Commissioner Thompson, could you present that one?
Well, change order on the 2000, excuse me, 2016 L-MIG contract increases the quantities on the project in order to make necessary repairs to approximately 2.4 miles of Santa Fe Road that were not originally included. The change order amount is $274,000 with no additional time added to the contract, contract completion date. My motion is to approve Chairman Stone to sign change order number two for that Georgia asphalt on the 2016 L-MIG contract increasing the contract amount by $274,000 from $816,273.23 to $1,090,273.23 with no increase in contract time.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Thompson, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it then, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner McMichael. Just point of explanation, this is the work that we did in conjunction with the city of Perry on Santa Fe Road. This is not the total amount, I don't think we paid the contractor the total amount yet, have we, Robin?
Not fully, they had to have a final bid before mounting it.
There's not a lot left, and once that happens, we'll get 50% reimbursement back from city of Perry.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we got a motion, got a second. Any other discussion on the motion?
Instead of letting that contract, a new one, we just went with quantity, which probably saved a lot of money.
No doubt about it. We've got another one pending with one Robbins right now on Sandy Run Road in between Old Altonville and State Route 247, very similar, so we can utilize the 2016 L-MIG unit prices. And if that happens, it will be handled in a similar situation. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor of the motion raise your right hand, motion carries. Item number six on the agenda is a change order for a spot overlay. Commissioner McMichael, could you present that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this change order is on the spot overlay project, to increase the quantities on the project in order to make repairs on the additional site on Santa Fe Road and to make repairs that were not covered on the original contract on Moody Road, Green Island Road, Kingsland Road, Rock Road, O'Per Road, and Peach Blossom Road. The change order is amount of $36,000 with 62 additional days of the contract time. My motion is for the chairman to sign a contract order number one with Will MacPaving Company, and on the 2016 spot overlay number one contract increasing the contract amount by $36,000 from $69,880 to $105,880. The contract time will be increased by 62 days, and that is counted on as patchwork.
Got a motion by Commissioner McMichael, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion raise your right hand, motion carries. How many of you know where Rock Road's at?
I don't have a clue.
Black. Thank you.
Rock, Black.
Probably we need to assemble a class.
Robbie, you know where Rock Road is?
And Black Creek.
And why you added Green Island Road added to it too, so.
We give them that road inventory, it's about that thick, let them learn all those road names.
We'll have to bring Speedy back from the dead to get that done.
Okay, we got a motion, got a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Maybe I'll take a picture of it, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, we can handle that. Item number seven is a change order HVAC replacement. Commissioner Michael, could you present that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this one we always like to do because this is a reduction. This is a change order in the Houston County Annex/State Court Sheriff's Office for the HVAC replacement project, reduces the contract by an amount of $3,564 due to the roof repair allowance not being used on the contract. My motion is for Chairman Stoner to sign a change order number one with International City Builders Incorporated on the Annex/State Court/Sheriff's Office HVAC replacement project, decreasing contract amount by $3,564 from $999,819 to $996,255.
Got a motion for approval for the change order reduction by Commissioner Michael, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on the motion?
That'll do a bit helps, but that's still a big price.
Are they 100% now, Mr. Dunbar?
Yes, sir. I think they're waiting to send us the final bill pending this change order. I went around and met with the State Court Clerk and the Development Authority and Mr. Angus Smith solicited his office last week. Maybe y'all gave a thumbs up of what the final problem areas that we had to complain on, so I think we're in this here.
Anybody else got any questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor, the motion raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number eight on the agenda is approval of a bid. It's the L-MIG off-system safety program. Commissioner Michael, if you'd present that one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before I do this motion, I've had several comments been made by folks in the county about adding that they need to strip for some of the roads and this is going to take care of that issue and this has come. This off-system safety program is simply known as striping. Bids were solicited from the L-MIG off-system safety program with three bids received. Staff recommends a low bid of mid-state construction and striping company amount of $133,641.18. The scope of the project includes striping and pavement markings on various county roads. My motion is to award the L-MIG off-safety, off-system safety program, project of mid-state construction and striping in the amount of $133,641.18.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Michael, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker. For the media and the audience as well, the roads are listed now. Some roads, Commissioner Mike, you said people may be thinking they're going to get striding and they may not. There's only the roads that are listed on this sheet are the ones that's going to be striped. It's the last one.
Mr. Chairman, that's a lot of them, though.
Yes, it is, but I get asked about some that are not in the unincorporated area, so we just need to be careful that the wrong impression doesn't go to all these roads.
There they are.
Fixing to, fixing to get lines on them.
A lot on this list really needs striping.
That's right.
They sure do.
Well, they might need to striping, but there was only X number of dollars go around with the grant and a lot of those roads are in city limits and not in unincorporated areas as well. Most people don't realize the cost in striping. Look at the first road, that Dunbar Road, which is almost 4.1 miles for the center and the edge lines and RPM, that's the way you pavement markers, it has almost $15,000 for that road and stuff.
That's in my Robin neighborhood, you know, it's me today, Robin.
You got on that first, too.
Right, right.
Any reason that's on that first, Mr. Dunbar?
I didn't do it, Mr. Dunbar.
Is that your story, you sticking to it?
And it's all the same.
I was just wondering why you didn't abstain, Commissioner Walker, on that road.
It's the third most expensive one of all, I'm telling you.
You were in a mile on that road, too.
Yeah, it's really a racetrack road. I think it is interesting, though, the cost of it. I mean, when you're riding down the road, you don't think of the cost of those lines and RPMs, but when you see the dollars it takes to put them down there, it's very expensive. Look at Grobania Road, six and a half miles. Okay, we got a motion, got a second. Need, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Dunbar, that $133,000, that's reimbursable or is that, they've already sent the money to us?
They're going to send us the check for $100,000. Our match will be $31,000. The remainder is that.
Right. Item number nine on the agenda tonight is approval of the bid. Test well, Commissioner Michael, could you present that one?
Another well-needed, Mr. Chairman. At July 5th meeting, the board approved an option to purchase land from Deborah Mason for the purpose of locating a water system well site in the property near the intersection of State Route 96 and State Route 247. This option was entered into contention upon a test well providing suitable for the county needs and that is good water. Bids have now been solicited for the six-inch test well for the Mason Track and our water system consultant, Carlton Sloop, recommends award to Sam Martin Well Drilling in the amount of $55,908. And we did have three bids on that. So my motion is award of a six-inch test well project on the Mason Track in Bonn, in Bonn, to Sam Martin Well Drilling Incorporated, Rentz, Georgia, amount of $55,908. And subject to this project is to be funded by the Water Department's capital funds.
A motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Might add that this is being paid, Commissioner Michael already touched on it, out of capital funds or reserve fund in the water systems, we're not raising water rates and we're not bonding the indebtedness for this treatment plant. When we're all said and done, we're going to be probably 3/4 of a million dollars when this facility is complete. So it's a lot of money, something that's got to be done if we're going to continue to be able to supply people water in the coming years.
And we are not in the sewer business.
Got a motion, got a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number 10 on the agenda is a board appointments by Commissioner Robinson.
Okay, appointments to the Georgia Small Business Lender Board would be Jimmy Walker, 10-0116 through 9-3019, and Lee Jones, 10-0116 through 9-3019. My motion is to approve the appointment of Mr. Lee Jones and to reappoint Mr. Jimmy Walker. Both terms will expire on September 30th, 2019.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Robinson, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number 11 on the agenda tonight is the bills will be presented by Commissioner Robinson tonight. For yours.
Okay, the bills have been reviewed. All the bills are in order. It's my motion that we pay the bills totaling $1,610,947.98 and it's my motion to approve this.
Got a motion for approval by Commissioner Robinson, need a second to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've also reviewed the bills, make the motion be approved. A second to the motion.
Got a second by Commissioner Michael. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. That's a small amount of bills. Next time, they'll be much larger because a few more days in between meetings. For the add-on tonight, item number 12 will be the first one and has to do with the budget adjustment for FY16, closing out fiscal year. Commissioner Robinson, could you present that?
Okay. The add-on, it's my motion to approve the following increased expenditures and decreased expenditures, to approve these year-end adjustments for fiscal year 2016.
Got a motion for approval, need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number 13 is also an add-on that has to do with resolution on new, different credit cards. Commissioner Robinson, could you present that one?
Item number 13, my motion is to approve a resolution to authorize Chairman Stoner to sign on behalf of the Board of Commissioners concerning credit cards issued through Morris Bank.
Need a second to the motion.
I'll say it.
Got a second by Commissioner Michael. Any discussion on the motion? Currently, it's Master Cards, the new credit cards, the Visa cards. Obviously, the bank that has the Master Cards, we changed that particular bank going over to Morris because of some hiccups that's occurred with that credit card on Master Cards. So we felt like we needed to change the charge card. Got a motion, got a second. Just for the benefit of, I know a lot of governments, they talk about this, but this government has very few credit cards. I think all total, we have like eight credit cards, something like that.
It may be nine or 10, but yes, sir, that's.
And most of them are assigned to a person. It's got some generic cards where multiple people, employees could use it where they check that card out, have to check that card back in. On these particular cards, you get two generic cards for the sheriff's office where the warrants division have to go out of town quite often, pick up prisoners and bring them back. Sometimes they have to fly. Matter of fact, they was on a trip recently and that's what the hiccup happened. The charge card kicked out on them and that Master Card, so we can't have that when we got somebody in the middle part of the United States and they need to get back home for those reasons, but it will be much better for them and they don't have to check the card out. The sheriff is responsible for that card and making sure that invoices get turned in and off.
Would that card have a chip in it that's a few chip?
I'm sure they will.
Do you now?
I think just about all of them are coming in. I'm sure everybody's heard the same thing that I've been hearing, that the chips are problematic now.
They are.
I've had one for a while. They saying that the hackers are getting into the chips just as easy as they are to do.
Well, they keep up on the technology also.
Mr. Chairman, just information on, some schools and hotels have been guaranteed on the old card. Would that be, we need to switch that over to the new card or how are we going to handle that?
We can. I don't think there's going to be very many of them that slide that. Not that I know of, not unless somebody booked something months out in advance.
I don't know.
I don't think that's the case, but obviously the bills, it's going to have to come in on the old card and we're going to have to pay all those bills also. You're looking at another 30, 60 days before you can cycle out of one into another. But there are no, what do they call them, the P cards? We not in the P card business. What's the other card that some of the counties up north of us got in trouble over? The P cards was one of them.
Yeah.
And debit cards.
Yeah, some people have that. They have some unbelievable amounts on those cards, too. Some of them are using for personal business.
Right, cash cards.
And I can assure you, I was already used for personal business.
Well, especially in City of Atlanta, I shouldn't necessarily say that.
And adjoining counties. J U Macy, adjoining counties.
Don't be calling names. Got a motion, got a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number, next item that completes the agenda is public comment. I'm going to begin on my right-hand side of the room, be the left-hand side of the room where you're seated tonight. Anybody on this side of the room need to bring anything to the commissioners tonight? Anything? Chief, you want to give us a quick update on your building?
Yes, we'd be glad to, of course, to slide forward, being Thursday morning on that, take care of some issues on that. The steel's up, all the girders are up, hopefully they'll start putting the skin and roof on it here shortly. Moving forward very rapid. Water line's been extended across, both boards have been done. Have power out tonight, hopefully, the next couple of days, so things are progressing very well.
You know, the only thing I can think we did find out is how quick they're going to get that power now. They got the easement, but it's going to be a month, two months, three months.
I'm living in there for hours.
I hope it was like the water contract, when you let the contract for the board, they were out there fairly shortly, within, I think, a week, four. Hopefully, they'll be out there very soon. Do you have a schedule for it yet, Chief? I'm sorry.
They're waiting on us.
She's probably got something to do.
Mark, since we're talking about construction, here we got just a minute. I think it'd be good public information to bring us all up to date on the state patrol and the T-hangers.
Well, the T-hangers are 99.9% complete. They're waiting on us to do cleanup, once we get our pipe and drain that's completed over there. The GSP hangar, hopefully this Friday will be inspected by the local inspectors. Hopefully, everything will pass. And then Monday, everybody's supposed to go, when I say everybody, contractor, architect, everybody's supposed to meet and go through the building and see, you know, work out a punch list and then it's kind of, they'll be pretty much complete with ICD's contract and it's going to kind of be on us for the exterior, landscape and paving and parking. So we're just about there.
They're looking pretty good, isn't it?
They're going to have to, there's going to be some furniture, you know, GSP's handling that, they're going to have to bring that in, but they can't do any of that if we get our occupancy.
Still looking at sometimes in October to have the dedication of facility, I think.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on my left-hand side room, which would be the right-hand side room, please come forward.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Tyne Boss with Family Connections for Kids during here in Housen County and I have a grant that Housen County Family Connections has received and I'm just here to inform the community and commissioners because one of my partners is our local library system. You talked, the gentleman before talked about foundation and you repeated that as well. This grant is to help the foundation for our children of birth of law in Housen County. Now, I pulled some numbers and some interesting statistics for our families here. Our county has a population of 139,900, according to some statistics through the census. 6% of our population is now Hispanic or Latino. 5,212 of our population are under the age of five are male and 4,992 are female under the age of five, which gives us roughly 10,000 children under the age of five in Housen County. And you talked earlier also about the work that we do in RLC, which is amazing. That work with some clients who are in that program and it is one of the programs that kept them going to high school. So it's a wonderful program. But if we don't start with our children when they're young and their parents and training them up to be successful, they are not going to graduate high school. And we know that because there is a lot of research out there that shows us the first three to five years is the critical period for our children in our communities. And so this program or this grant is going to address some of those issues. The grant was written for three purposes. One, to get the information out to our community about our local library system and the services that they offer, one of them being storytelling. When children are not, our parents are not engaged in their children's life, that causes a multitude of problems. And this grant is going to encourage those parents to bring children or adults to bring children under the age of five to the library, simply to read books, to participate with other family members, other people in the community with children similar age, and to just be connected to someone. Um, the second thing it's gonna do is we are providing a story time in Spanish at all three of our libraries. So we have staff that will be going through the library one day a week at each of the libraries and we'll be doing the story time in Spanish, songs, finger plays, games, those kinds of activities. And the third thing is we are providing transportation for free on the Warner Robins Transit System, which is our Houston County Public Transportation System, um, to go to the library. So they don't have to, if they don't speak English, they now can go and someone will speak their language, if it's Spanish, of course. Um, they have the opportunity to get on a, a bus for free and go to the library to participate in these activities. Um, what we're hoping is we'll see an increase of people using the library. Um, in the world of technology that we are in right now, a lot of people don't see the need to go to the library. But simply having a book in a child's hand is gonna improve and increase their, their, um, ability to be successful in school. If they're, if we aren't reaching them by third grade, the story is sad. And that's what we use to determine how many prison beds we're gonna need is what their reading level is at third grade. That's not very much time in school. That's four years in school for our teachers to get a hold of them if their parents and adults aren't doing anything prior to kindergarten. So this is really important for our community to understand. We can make a difference. And part of that is supporting those families that have children under the age of five and this is one way to do that. So I am the contact person for the grant. I mean, it's Tyne, my boss, and my office is actually at City Hall, Warner Robins City Hall right now. And, um, I'm working with community partners. Um, the library obviously is one of them because that's where the story times are being held, Perry, Centerville, and Warner Robins. Um, and so I'm just trying to educate you that it is available, number one, because, um, my contact at the library said you guys are big supporters of the library and a lot of their funding does, does come through the county commissioner's office. So they really wanted me to come and make sure that you were aware that we were doing this program and that you could help us spread the word so people can take advantage of those resources. Any questions?
What, what agency are you applying for the grant through?
The, the grant is, um, to serve parents or adults with children birth to eight. But obviously at five, they go to school. So our focus is really trying to find those children who are home with an adult that are birth to four, five, before they start kindergarten. And that's really who we're looking for. We don't, we're not really trying to target the children who are going to daycare or going to preschool because they're getting that education already in those, um, things. But, and they're not home during the day, which is when the story times are happening.
Is it a state or federal agency that, that you're applying?
Oh, we already received the funding and it's through the Department of Early Care and Learning through Decap that the grant, the money's coming through. And the programming will start September, um, the day after Labor Day and go through Mother's Day.
Thank you, ma'am. Just see if any, Mr.'s got any questions, please. Anybody else got any questions?
Well, you're certainly filling a, a very needed, uh, program and endeavor. But you, you're right. If the children don't, at third grade level, fourth grade level, if they're not techable reading, that they're more likely not gonna get it. And you have a productive system as opposed to an unproductive system for them.
Yeah, it's cost effective.
It is. It is.
Are you doing anything through Head Start with this program?
Um, Head Start, they go to school at Head Start. So they'll already be at a learning facility, if you will, um, during the days that the story times are offered. So they're already in that type of learning environment. We're trying to target those ones who are not in a learning environment, who are at home with a grandma, an aunt, an uncle, somebody who isn't reading to them perhaps, or just turning on the TV or letting them on the internet all day. You know, we wanna make sure that they're, they're exposed. Plus, um, at story time, not only do they read stories, but they sing songs, they do finger plays. My background is early childhood. I'm very passionate about early childhood. And we know that if I teach a parent how to sing a song, the odds are they're gonna repeat it at home because it's stuck in your head. And John, Jake, go jingle, I'm just, I mean, it's stuck in your head. So.
Same time.
So those, those things are good things for parents to be exposed to. And a lot of parents do not have those resources or remember them from their own childhood when they're around children, especially older people.
Have you used any programs with our library before or is this the first time?
This is the first time I have. Well, actually, we partnered with the library started two years ago and we started offering, um, Dr. Sue's birthday. So on March second, we partnered with the library to do activities. The mayor's from the three, um, cities come and read at their particular library. So.
I'm gonna tell you, you find them very receptive.
They are extremely.
And we do back the libraries. We, we fund the libraries and, and we're a big library holder.
Yeah, they were the one that said you have to go tell the commissioners what we're doing. And she also just got a huge grant as well, um, Ms. Pollock with the library system. And she has, I don't know how many books it was, but she got a large grant to actually purchase Spanish books. So not only now do we have this program, but now they have resources as well. So when they come to the library, they can actually check books out in their own language. And it's all STEAM, um, science, technology, um, English, no, I forget what these, um, arts and math, the STEAM, um, um, educational system. So it's all supported that as well. I did forget to mention in Perry, since we don't have transportation in Perry, the Perry Volunteer Outreach, they actually provide transportation in Perry and that was new to me. Um, so if people in Perry want to go to the library, they will bring them to the library. Each side, we already do that transportation. No one's ever asked to go to the library. So I was excited to hear that that's also available now in Perry as well.
One last question. Do you get anything out of Jake Cox? Is he pretty good helping?
Jake is very good helping. He's on my board. Yeah. He's my secretary. I have some information I want to.
Just don't bring us any green eggs, please.
He likes snacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, anybody else on my left-hand side of the room?
That's a mistake on the year.
Jimmy, glad you're here. You're gonna help us get that power though.
I'm sure it's already in it. I'll see you back tomorrow.
I'll leave that eleven-thirty check on that morning, okay?
Yes.
Jimmy, you do a lot in the community and, and here again, just for public consumption and all, because a lot of people don't realize what it took in the background. Uh, briefly tell us a little bit about the, the Southeastern Little League that just finished up and what the community did, the volunteers. And I know you was right there in the thick of that. Uh, how many volunteers that it took, uh, to be able to support that tournament? And also what you see from the economic benefit from it?
Absolutely. It's so very important now for, for six years, like we've been doing the Houston Little League. And, uh, it starts out, we host the banquet to start out before the tournaments begin for both girls and boys and, and a half dozen to a dozen volunteers who jump up with that and get things put together. But for the tournaments themselves, there's probably a hundred and seventy-five volunteers who are doing work of some kind, whether it's score or parking or whatever it has to be. A lot of people have been involved and, uh, I still get questions. People say, I love that idea. Where can I get tickets to go? I said, well, it's really, you don't need tickets. Just go to the games. It's gonna take advantage of it. But it's been a great thing. And yes, uh, I know that March Brazil's looked into it, actually officially looked, and economic impact for having those folks come to town and stay with us over the matter of about twelve days, uh, not the least of which, uh, you know, get able to get time on ESPN. There's not much that brings the ESPN cameras to Houston County. Uh, and you think about that, those games or play those last three games when the boys are there. And today, the team from, uh, Tennessee is, uh, just getting ready to get started. They're two days away from representing us in Williamsport. So the big tournaments about to begin on ESPN. By the time the Olympics ends, Little League begins.
That's good. I, I talked to several of the parents from the various states, uh, both the little girls and the little boys. And they was very, uh, pleased that the warmth and all that they had felt here and the community as a whole. And, uh, one, one group of parents had actually been here before and they was pleased to be able to come back. And, uh, but they said they thoroughly enjoyed coming to the tournaments here, or tournament.
Yeah. We try to introduce them that first night and let them know that they should be at home. And if they need us, to let us know. And I think they have the experience while they're here. And that word is freedom. It goes back to their states and tells us how big we are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This time I'm gonna turn to the commissioners for any comments you have, Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just thank everybody for being here tonight and thank you for your presentation. And that it's so important that we get young people up speed, especially reading. And Major, thank you for coming tonight and enjoyed your presentation and wish you great successes here and to your students. It's great to be in here.
Mr. Robinson.
Uh, just thank everybody for coming. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. We're glad to, glad to just be able to provide for the county and have a service and be confident and hope everyone can enjoy it.
Major, I wanna echo what, uh, Commissioner Walker said. Thank you. First of all, will you service again, but what you do in the school system and all, it's very important what you're doing. And, and thank you for being here tonight as well. Uh, I wanna ask one question to those of you not, probably maybe shouldn't do this, but are the screens of value to those of you sitting down in the audience? Do y'all even look up at them and see what's on, uh, to know what's going on? I know the media's already got the printed material and all, but if it's of value, we, we want it to be of value. I mean, if we need to do additional, what we already doing, we'll do that. But, uh, I know, uh, meetings that I go to, if I got a chance to look and see what's going on, it certainly helps me out a lot more.
Some of us have invested some money in new iPads, waiting for the link for the iPad.
The answer to that is we're working on it.
We're looking at it, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, uh, as far as the gender on springs, it helps, it obviously be part of the, you know, meeting. I mean, it's, it's, to me it does, ours, myself.
Commissioner Thompson.
Once I was summing up, every day in Houston County is one. That's real meaning. It's good to be here. Glad you're back, Major.
Commissioner McMichael.
Again, Major, thank you a million times what you do for the children in the Northside and all the other ROTC instructions in the county and making some, changing the life, I'm sure, of some young people. And I wanna thank all the people out of the county that makes this the greatest county in the state and the state of Georgia. Live, work, and play. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, let me just close by saying this. We was talking about that water tank a while ago. That water tank's being shown across this country now. And a former three-star general is using that water tank in a speech that he's giving, uh, this week to a group. And also the acronym that's on that tank, uh, is going across this country. And there was a gentleman that's stationed at Tinker that was here last week. Uh, he's over a group from Hill, Tinker, and Robbins. And, and he was in here and he's in Robbins a good bit. And the conversation struck up and he's an Ohio State fan. And, uh, we told him where the tank came from and all. He thought the tank was beautiful anyway, but once he found out it was from Ohio State University, he was even more pleased. So, so, uh, that tank is, is, is really hitting the tone with military and civilian people and it's spreading across the country now. So that's a positive thing. Saying that, we'll entertain a motion for a German. Salute. Got a motion by Commissioner Walker, need a second to the motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Thompson. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We'll dismiss it. Thanks.